Proceed, yeah.
Good.
You usually sit there.
What you gonna do over here?
How's everybody doing?
Good.
Good.
Morning.
Our second shot, so we're good.
How are you?
Okay.
Yep.
Hopefully these come off, so it's not scary. Looks like the CDC is...
Everybody's in time.
...in anyway. Yeah.
Try teaching swim lessons with a face mask or a face shield. I said the Y, I have to wear, I have to wear a face shield or a face mask in the pool.
Wow.
That's, so I wear a plastic face shield that has spots all over it.
Hello, I'm Lynn, it's Maya.
Hi.
Hey, I wanted to let you know, I made some revisions, I just got off the phone with Mike Wiley.
And I just received it.
Right, so I just wanted to let you know, that's gonna be the new finalized agreement.
All right.
And I sent it to Ken, so that he knows to move it on to.
Okay, so I'll print that, um, when I go up.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And did, um, do you know that we're gonna have two, um, separate items then? One to approve the agreement, one to have the addendum then?
Yes.
Okay, just wanna make sure you had that, okay?
Thank you.
Yep.
This is different from what I have.
Yeah, it's, uh, so I took two weeks to get on the front page.
Okay. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Who do we have on the line?
Brooke, some assessment.
Solicitor Smith.
Nikki from the county office.
And for maintenance.
Maya from purchasing.
I was just waiting for Commissioner Metzger.
So we brought you gifts, you coming back?
Is that from our retirement?
Yeah.
Have my retirement.
No.
I guess.
I'd be honest with you.
You wanna do it? You ready?
Yep.
Morning, everyone. Ask you to please rise for the opening prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and opportunity to gather and conduct the business of the county. Lord, remember this morning those that were tragically taken in Atlanta and Boulder over the past two weeks. We pray for each victim's family, especially Officer Eric Tally, the father of who seven, who ran into the grocery store knowing an armed person was present. We ask you to please comfort all these families and provide them a sense of peace and comfort at this horrific time in their lives. Remember yesterday as National Vietnam War Veterans Day. It was on this date nineteen seventy-three Combat and Combat Support Units withdrew from South Vietnam. Slightly more than two million Americans served in uniform in Vietnam and Southeast Asia. They traveled across the world to fight against oppression in the name of freedom. We publicly thank and support and honor those veterans for their service. We thank you for the heroes that sacrificed for our freedoms. Father, we remember last Tuesday, March twenty-fourth, is National Agriculture Day. We thank you for our farmers who turn the soil, plant our crops, and raise their livestock to feed us daily. We thank you for their creation that you've given us, that 2% of the population worked diligently to feed the other 98% of us. Without our farmers, we would not have one of the necessities of life. Father, as we thank our farmers for providing us earthly food, this week we celebrate Passover and Easter. We remember the sacrifice of your son and his resurrection to give us spiritual food and hope. We know you are with us at all times. In the book of Isaiah, you tell us, "Do not fear, for I'm with you. Do not be dismayed, for I'm your God. I will strengthen you and help you. I will uphold you in my righteous right hand." We pray for those who are suffering at this time, whether it be physically, mentally, spiritually, or economically. We ask that you remember them during this time in Easter season, and they will be restored. Provide them a peace and hope. Change our lives and hearts that we can be messengers of the Easter joy and hope to a nation that needs this message more than ever in these times. These things, we humbly pray in your name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everyone. Glad to see everybody in attendance. At this time, we'll convene the Commissioners' Public Meeting. And I'd like to start off, since it's not on the agenda, but we had a big event happen in Lycoming County this past weekend. And I'd like to recognize and honor the Lowell-Sock Lancers basketball team for winning a state title, which is a huge accomplishment. It's very hard to win a state title, especially when you have private schools that can charter and recruit any kid from any area. And for a public school to be able to do this accomplishment the size of Lowell-Sock is enormous. So we want to congratulate that team and Coach CI, who had, I believe now has eight hundred and eighty-six wins in his forty-seven-year illustrious career, which is unbelievable. And we want to congratulate that school and that team. And we hope to invite them in the future to a Commissioners' meeting, so we can honor them. So at this time, I'd like to ask for approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair, so I?
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Okay, at this time, I have public comments on agenda items only. Okay, here you go, we'll move on.
One point six, we're presenting a proclamation for National Agricultural Week, and Commissioner Maravito is going to read that.
Proclamation. Whereas National Agriculture Week is devoted to educating people about where food, fiber, and fuel come from, every year, producers, agricultural associations, corporations, universities, government agencies, and others join to recognize the contributions of agriculture. National Ag Day falls during National Agriculture Week. And whereas according to most recent U.S. Census Bureau statistics, there are three hundred and eighty-six thousand five hundred and thirty-one men and women working as farmers and ranchers, there are fifty-one thousand eight hundred and sixty-five women working as farmers and ranchers. So I, I thought they had left out the women, and I put an editorial comment in there. Whereas to keep up, whereas today, a farmer grows twice as much food as his parents did, using less land, energy, water, and fewer emissions, today, the average U.S. farmer feeds one hundred and fifty-five people. In nineteen sixty, a farmer fed just twenty-six people. And whereas to keep up with population growth, more food will have to be produced in the next fifty years as the past ten thousand years combined. And whereas U.S. farmers produce about forty percent of the world's corn, using only twenty percent of the total area harvested in the world. According to the USDA, one acre of corn removes about eight tons of carbon dioxide from the air in a growing season. At eight, one hundred and eighty bushels per acre, corn produces enough oxygen to supply a year's need for one hundred and thirty-one people. And now, therefore, the Commissioners of the County of Lycoming, Pennsylvania, hereby proclaim the week of March twenty-second to the twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one, as National Agriculture Week in Lycoming County. And witness whereof we set our hand and seal this thirtieth day of March, twenty-twenty-one. Lycoming County Commissioners Scott Almetzger, Chairperson; Tony Armisere, Vice Chairman; Richard Maravito, Secretary. I'm not sure. Is, is, yeah, is there anyone here from the ag community or from Penn State Extension? No. Well, we want to congratulate and thank the farmers for all they do. It's really a very difficult job in an ever-increasing stressful environment. Even without the pandemic, just the pressures of trying to, if you're a dairy farmer, trying to get a fair price for your, for your milk. And, and I note the passing of Donna Hall, whom my colleagues know, and many of you may know, who fought tirelessly for the dairy farmers, not just in Lycoming County, but, but across the country. And she passed away about two weeks ago. And, you know, she always reminded people of the grassroots nature of farming. These are, I'm amazed when I, when I read the number of farmers that there are, because think about it. In this country, we've gone from having a country that was, you know, ninety percent farmers to a country that's now two percent. And, and if you look at the population of the world, today, it's eight billion people, close to eight billion people. And, you know, somehow, we have to find a way to feed them, right? Because if we can't find a way to feed them, we'll see the continuation of the kind of mass starvation that's happened so often. So we do congratulate them, and I thank you for allowing me to read that.
You know, and I, I'd like to send my condolences out to the Hall family. They, they lost, she lost her son a year ago. And I've been out at their farm on many occasions. And throughout Lycoming County, I've been to a tremendous amount of farms. And you get up early, especially the dairy farmers. You get up milking twice a day, and there's no vacations. We've lost a tremendous amount of dairy farmers in our area. And Donna was an advocate for every day. She did not stop. And I, I hope the fight continues, because they're gonna be gobbled up by big conglomerates. And I'm not sure where that will lead us, but I kinda like the small farms, you know, the fifty, hundred, you know, cow herds that can make a difference in our community.
Well, the farmer's dear to my heart, because I come from that stock. My great-grandfather was a farmer, and he raised five boys on that farm. And that farm's still going, it's a hundred and fifty years old, my cousins run it. And I remember visiting in Linden as a kid and, and watching my, my cousins work it. My grandfather and dad went on to become builders, building contractors, but the rest of the family stayed farmers. And they were dairy farmers. And think about this, the dairy farmer has not had a raise since nineteen eighty-one. Imagine that, forty years without a raise. And a lot of the dairy farmers have to convert over. My cousins had to convert their farm over, from a dairy farm to a beef cow farm, so. It's vital that we honor our farmers, it's vital that we support them. I had the opportunity to speak to Mrs. Hall last January. Not this past January she passed, but the January before, she was very passionate about getting the dairy farmers and the farmer's help. And you think about this, whoever controls the food chain in this world, controls the world. So as the American farmer dies out, we lose that food chain. So it's very important that we continue to support our American farmer, and we thank them for their service, because it is an extremely hard profession. They work from before sunrise till sunset. And especially the dairy farmers, you're at the mercy of the cow. When the cow's ready to milk, you have to go, even with the machine, so. Again, we thank them for what they do and their service to our, to our communities and our country.
So we have two Employee Service Awards to give out today. The first one is Joshua Billings. He's receiving a twenty-year service pin and also retiring. So we have a clock for him and a pen.
Okay, Shannon? Shannon, you introduce yourself and what department you're with.
Sure, I'm Shannon Rosman, I'm the Director of the Planning and Community Development Department with the county. And Joshua Billings has been our subdivision land development administrator for many years. I've only had the pleasure of knowing him for the last year and a half, but he has been around for, for over twenty years now and has been involved with many of our municipalities. We have both the subdivision land development regulations for twenty-five municipalities, yes? And he's been involved with them for many years. He's also was previously our environmental planner at one point in time. So he's been involved in the northern tier with projects up there, with projects throughout the county. So Joshua, wanna come up?
Oh, sure.
Like, say anything, Josh?
Yeah, I'd love to.
Step up to the podium, please, and you can pull your mask down, so it's easier to understand.
You are on a time, you are on a time limit, though.
Thank you, Shannon, and thank you, Commissioners. I just wanted to thank you all for supporting me through the years. I've worked under a number of different Commissioners and probably thirty or so different Planning Commission members. Now, the third Director I've been, had a, had a pleasure, pleasure to work with for the Planning Office. Many, many different staff members, and have enjoyed them all. All having unique personalities and characteristics bringing to the team of the Planning Office. And really has truly been a pleasure working with you all, as well as, and my, you know, real passion was working with the landowners of Lycoming County. And whether they were landowners, developers, attorneys, engineers, surveyors, and construction people, all different kinds of walks of life, had a chance to interact with while working with them to get subdivisions approved, working with them in ways to try to work within the ordinance to do what they wanted to do on their property, what was passionate to them. And, you know, with that, you know, and taking this early retirement from the county, I'm, I'm gonna take the opportunity to continue to do that, but on the landowner's side, on the developer's side. So you still see me around the community, working for the landowners. I am gonna be having my own consulting business for development. But with that said, again, just thank you so much, Commissioners, pleasure, staff, directors, members, and all the rest of the departments in the county. I've had a chance to get to know some of you, and I will miss you. But now, on my own time, we'll be able to just pop in and, and take up your time, if that's all right. But, thank you very much.
Thank you, Josh.
Well, Josh, before you go, we want to thank you. I certainly want to thank you for what you've done for twenty years. You're, you're the person who's been behind the scenes, oftentimes having to tell people, well, under the regulations, you know, you can or you can't do this, and that's not always a great place to be. And it's not that anybody wants to tell someone they can't do it. But I ask you, how many of you want an adult bookstore, you know, next to your house, right? Or how many of you want to have a, a factory right next to your house? So the whole point of zoning and land use regulations is to try to give some order. And you've done a great job of that. What's really interesting about what you've done is you've really had the cross-training and the experience to be able to, to contribute in multiple parts of the department, as, as the Director, Ms. Rosman said. So we want to thank you for the twenty years and wish you best of luck, Josh, in, in your new adventure. And I think it's gonna be very exciting for you.
Thank you, I am, I am excited.
Josh, one thing I saw about what you did at your job is you had passion. And we all want passion, whatever we do, whether it's a hobby or your job especially, you want to come to work and have passion for your job, and you always did have passion. And I wish you the best in your new endeavor.
Thank you, Scott.
And I'm sure with your energy and your passion, you'll be very successful.
I, I look at codes, zoning, you know, land use, and I don't know how you guys can do it a ton, because you take a lot of heat, and it's a huge responsibility. But the, the one thing, after talking to you a number of times, Josh, I, I never saw you get excited, you know? It's like you're pretty cool and calm, and, and I guess you have to be like that in that position. You know, I started a business in nineteen eighty-seven, and I left a very good job with good benefits. And it ended up being the right decision, but it comes with a lot of hard work. And you have to be dedicated. You were dedicated here in Lycoming County, and I know, I know you will be very successful at what you do. Especially, you know, I hope that you can bring changes to Lycoming County to make, make certain things a lot more efficient and, and get the paperwork and the proceeding going quicker. Because that's what developers and people in general want to see. So congratulations.
Thank you.
And I wish you the best of success.
Thank you, Tom. Appreciate it.
Are we masking it for the photo?
No. I will.
Can we have Matt across those?
Yeah.
Whatever you want, do you want some of the departments?
Bring them up. Bring them up. Bring them up. Well, one with, with the, you guys are more, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay, Office? Yeah, Office and Matt. I, I was gonna have him ride his Harley in here.
Don, you're not short.
There goes Matt. Matt was somewhere in the picture.
You guys don't realize the picture's already been taken. There we go, that's perfect.
Thank you.
We'll do a share. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks again, Josh.
We have another retirement, Howard Prasan. And, oh, there's Jerry.
Where's Jerry? You can introduce yourself and your department, please?
Morning, Commissioners. Jerry Kennedy, Director of Information Services. Howard joined the county in nineteen ninety-two. Good twenty-nine years with us. Has been a very good resource for any type of diagnostic or forensic accounting problems that we ever ran into. Very good troubleshooter of software packages from across the board, some that we didn't even, a lot that we didn't even write. Over the years, the last seven years, Howard has worked for me, and I know he's been here a long time. And we've had conversations about, why aren't you retiring, Howard? And he tells me, human resources won't, no, sorry, he says, HR won't let me. Like, HR won't let ya? It's the Home Resources Manager. So we've had a good joke over the last several years. Howard's been a very good employee, he's been a very good coworker, very good mentor for the younger staff. His vacancy will be felt. Thank you, Howard.
Howard, did I come up and say a few words?
No, but I... I'll just say that it's been a pleasure working here. I'm gonna miss the people, probably more than anything. I've worked with many departments and on many different projects, and I've enjoyed it. And as has been said, I don't think I've ever worked a day in my life, because I love what I do.
Howard, we thank you for basically a generation and a half of service to the county. And, you know, again, it's not work, as you stated, you enjoyed doing what you did. And I'm sure your wife has a honey-to-do list already for you.
He got a new, he got a new computer at Christmas time. He has seven lawners sitting on his desk at home. We were tires, playing on his computer.
Okay, so you won't be too far away from your passion. So best wishes in your retirement and good health, and, and we, we thank you for everything.
You know, I started back in nineteen ninety-two. And think about that, that's when Commissioner Maravito graduated from college. You can take that couple different. I, I think back in two thousand nineteen, you had a Job Well Done or, or a Time Off Award for, for some of the things that you did for the county. I think it had something to do with the vending, vending resolutions or finding it. I don't specifically recall, but I, I know it was a huge decision that we had to make on, on how we were gonna process some of these vendors. And you worked on that job and got an award for that. I know Jerry, Jerry said in the past, and Carl, a number of times, said how, how valuable you were to that department. And, you know, I just wanted to echo that. Carl was not here today, but he did, did have a lot of good things to say about you. So, good luck, and I'm not sure, did, did we get him a clock or did we get him a monitor after?
It's a monitor pulled into the clock.
Okay.
You know, Howard, Jerry's statement that you're gonna be hard to replace is, is a real understatement. It may be impossible. We've been out trying to find people to hire, and those twenty-nine years, you've seen a whole shift in what's happened in, in computers and in the whole advent of how we deal with it. And you have that experience from both ends, which is really invaluable, because, you know, obviously, the young people who come now don't have that, and so we are gonna miss that. And we appreciate the fact that your wife's allowed you to be with us for twenty-nine years, and we know you'll enjoy all those monitors when you get home, so enjoy your retirement.
And when someone leaves us with, with that institutional knowledge, it's, you can't put a finger on that, because it's, it's just so priceless. We're gonna honor another individual here at the end of the meeting, Mark Egley, from CI. And, and that institutional knowledge is, is, is something that sorely missed once it's gone. And if you, you know, what we hope for your situation and Mark's situation, that they... pass that on to their staff, and they were listening at the time and taking it like a sponge, so that they can learn from you. So we have a clock here to honor you, and we thank you for your service.
Move on to 2.0, bid openings with Nikki Gottschall. Nikki?
Yes.
Morning, Nikki.
So we have the Bridge Leslie Construction Inspection Project out for bid, and this is the first one that went on 10 bids. So we received five bids. They're from Stahl Schaefer Engineering, Bassett Engineering, Larson Design Group, Duverie, and Mettich Kunkel and Associates. Stahl Schaefer came in at $93,639.50. Bassett Engineering was $108,180. Larson Design Group was $79,195.05. Duverie came in at $95,282.42. And Mettich Kunkel and Associates was $76,734.93.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
3.0 with Nikki Gottschall, the cash requirements reports.
Miley, do you have both of them on the agenda or?
Yes, they're both on there.
Okay, Richard, so we have two on the agenda this week because there were no Commissioners meetings last week. Last week was just over $757,000. This week we're at $573,000. Did you have any questions on either of those?
Yeah, I did, just two. Page three, there's Tasers from Axon, and they're under, they're under purchasing.
Huh?
So I wondered why they fell under purchasing versus like the, and maybe this is not the Tasers that I'm thinking of versus the Sheriff's Department or something like that.
This is Maya. Those were things that we purchased for other departments. We, and purchasing, always purchase them on behalf of the department, so we negotiate the pricing, but those were purchases that were done for other departments, including the sheriff, adult probation, withdrawal, prison.
Very good. And if you went to page eight, you saw the Trustmark Health Benefit, and you had a note, dental administrative fees and workers' comp on that. So could you give me a breakdown of that?
Well, the $28,502.81 is the dental for the whole county.
Okay.
And then the admin fee is there, and then the life insurance is $1182.14, and your workers' comp is $39,330.
$39,330, okay, very good. Thank you. That's all the questions I asked.
Nikki, I had a question on page six into seven, the entire page of seven was all these blood tests.
Yep.
What were those for?
Those are DUIs for the District Attorney's Office.
Got it, okay.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie.
Personnel actions with Roxanne Greco.
Morning, Roxanne. You just identify your name and department, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. Roxanne Greco, Director of Human Resources. Our first personnel action would be at pre-release. Alyssa M. Leyland is a full-time replacement resident supervisor, pay grade six, $16.76 an hour effective March 31, 2021. In the courts at MDJ Kemp's office, Lindsay Sowers, full-time replacement clerk three, pay grade four, $14.09 an hour effective March 29, 2021. In the District Attorney's Office, Kurt Whelan is a full-time replacement clerk three, pay grade four, $14.09 an hour effective April 1, 2021. And at the prison, Spencer J. Ross is a full-time replacement correctional officer relief, pay grade CO1, $17.46 an hour effective March 28, 2021. If we could take those four, and then I'll do the last one separate.
And these are all replacement positions?
Correct.
For the prisons, PRC, and the courts?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? Have a motion to accept?
We have, we have a lot of turnover in correctional officers in the prison, and I just want the youth out there to understand that this is a great opportunity to get exposed to some of, not only the challenges, but benefits and opportunities that are here at the county. Many times, we see COs come in and then go into another direction, whether it be the state or federal prison system, or bail release, parole. It's a great opportunity to get your feet wet and start to understand what happens in your community. I believe most of the people that I talk to, and matter of fact, I haven't heard any, that were disappointed with the opportunities here. And it gives them that chance of being promoted and moving on. So, and I'd just like the public and the parents out there that have sons and daughters that are looking for something to do after high school or college, this is a great opportunity to wire yourself.
That's a good point, and I'll make a motion to approve the four personnel items.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie.
4.5, Commissioners, is to vote on the personnel actions for the month of March 2021.
Any questions or comments? Have a motion?
I move.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie. Thank you. At this time, we'll recess the Commissioners' Public Meeting, and we'll convene the Board of Assessments Revision.
Brooke Wright is on the phone.
Morning, Brooke. Could you identify yourself and your department, please?
Sure. Good morning, Commissioners. This is Brooke Wright, the Chief Assessor at the Tax Assessment Office. I have a list of real estate exonerations I'm asking for your approval on. The real estate exonerations are for revisions of county tax bills. If you have the list in front of you, you will notice that some of the properties are delinquent. Some properties are better exemptions, and we had a couple mobile homes that moved out of the county, so they must, they had to be exonerated.
Okay, any questions or discussion on those? I did. Hearing, no questions or discussion? Have a motion to accept?
I'll move to approve the revisions and exonerations set forth in the agenda.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie. Thank you, Brooke.
Thank you, Commissioners.
At this time, we'll adjourn the Board of Assessments Revision.
We're not done yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I did.
I have a real estate refund, too.
I just saw it. I apologize.
Okay, I'm requesting approval on this real estate refund. The money, the refund would be going to Best Home Design and Remodeling. What happened is he purchased the property in an upset tax bill in September of 2018. The owner, in turn, filed with the courts to get the property back. It continued in court 2019, 2020, until the courts overturned the ruling and gave it back to the owner. In the meantime, Best Homes had paid the 2019 taxes. We are refunding him the county taxes from 2019, and then in turn, the 2019 taxes will be put onto delinquent taxes. The amount for the total refund is $1,275.74.
Okay. Any questions?
It's kind of like, this is unusual, correct?
Yes, it's a very unique situation, but Assessor handles all refunds. Tax Claim does not handle this type of refunds on county taxes.
And so when it was passed back to the original owner, then he is, he or she, are delinquent in those taxes, or is that just because of the paperwork, the procedure?
No, he's delinquent. He's delinquent on prior years, too, and they are aware of it, that they must pay the taxes, or it would go up for tax sale this year in September.
Okay.
Any further comments? Hearing that, can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the refund to Best Home Design.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie. Thank you, Brooke.
Thank you, Commissioners.
At this time, we'll adjourn the Board of Assessments Revisions, and we'll reconvene the Commissioners' Public Meeting.
We have an informational item with Maya Toon, acknowledging the county will be requesting bids for bread products.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
So yes, we will be requesting bids for bread products.
Okay, sounds good. Maya, could you state your full name and what department you're with for the record?
Sure.
Great.
Yep, name's Maya Toon, the Chief Patrol Officer, and I work in the Purchasing Office.
Great, thank you.
And I'd recommend that Commissioner Metzger puts in a bid for those bread products. He makes some of the best bread I've ever tasted.
I do it once a year at Christmas.
He grew that bread a few weeks ago.
Thank you for the compliment. Doesn't mean you get more than one wolf next to you, though.
Nice try. I want the recipe.
That's not happening.
So we'll move on to action items. Maya Toon has 7.1 through 7.3. Maya?
Yes. The first item I have is to vote on the amendment to bring a return key construction incorporated. If you recall, this is the company that's helping us construct the floodgates for MDJ Settlement Bill. The reason for those amendments is that due to the way we're receiving materials, the construction schedule has been revised, and the contractor is now requesting an extension to July 1, 2021 instead of June 1.
So a 30-day extension?
Correct.
Okay. I have a motion.
Was the access to the property resolved?
At this time, we're going back and forth. The gentleman that I'm working with, I had made contact with him, he had not, and basically I left a voicemail with him stating that we wanted to negotiate it. Unfortunately, I still have not heard back from the gentleman.
Okay.
Okay. I have a motion to accept?
I'll move to approve the amendment.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie.
The next item I have is to vote on awarding the bid for some products to Caesar's Incorporated, Kiko Distributors Incorporated, and Cisco Central Pennsylvania. These are the bidders that were all submitted bids, and they will be awarded on an individual per item basis based off of what is costing a bid.
Okay. Motion to accept?
I'll move to accept.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Have a good day.
Michelle McDermott has 7.5, 7.6, and 7.7.
Good morning, Michelle.
Good morning, Commissioners. Michelle McDermott, Ministerial Specialist Budget and Finance Office. The first one is with Baker Tilly to conduct the county's audit in the amount of $69,650, and that is for the 2020 audit, and that was a budgeted item for this year.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Hearing that, can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie.
The next item is for Baker Tilly to conduct the Lycoming County Bank Authority 2020 Audit in the amount of $9,200, and that one is to be paid by them.
Okay. Any questions or comments on this audit? Hearing that, can I have a motion to accept?
I'll move to accept.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie, thank you.
And the following item is for 11 budgeted 2021 grant and monitoring agreements for outside agencies, and I will just read down the list of them and their dollar amount.
Thank you.
The first one is for Law Enforcement and Police Training Association in the amount of $25,000. The next one is for American Rescue Workers in the amount of $20,000. Lycoming Early Learning Team, which is for the Ready Rosie product, in the amount of $16,684. The next one is for Fire Tree Place in the amount of $40,000. Next is for the Lycoming County Historical Society in the amount of $20,000. The next one is for the Community Arts Center in the amount of $25,000. The next one is for Lycoming Police Camp Cadet Foundation in the amount of $3,000. The next is for Lycoming County Senior Citizens in the amount of $10,000. The next one is for Williamsport Regional Airport in the amount of $78,360, and that one is for a grant match that the county does on an annual basis. The next one is for the Lycoming County Industrial Development Authority in the amount of $3,000. And the last one is for the Lycoming County Library System in the amount of $1,281,912.
We're mainly looking at like a respite, or like foster care emergency situation, place them there. So they're close within the community to their families.
That's definitely a benefit. Are there any children down there right now?
No.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
So Nancy, use this on an as needed basis.
Absolutely, as needed, yeah. We may never need them, but we'll have them in case we do.
Right.
Great, thank you. I have a motion to accept?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So carry it, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Have a good day.
You too.
Michelle McDermott has 7.5, 7.6, and 7.7.
Good morning, Michelle.
Good morning, Commissioners. Michelle McDermott, Ministerial Specialist Budget and Finance Office. The first one is with Baker Tilly to conduct the county's audit in the amount of $69,650, and that is for the 2020 audit. And that was a budgeted item for this year.
Any questions or comments? Hearing that can have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So carry it.
The next item is for Baker Tilly to conduct the LeComming County Back Authority 2020 audit in the amount of $9,200, and that one is to be paid by them.
Okay. Any questions or comments on this audit? Hearing that can have a motion to accept?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So carry it, thank you.
And the following item is for 11 budgeted 2021 grant and monitoring agreements for outside agencies, and I will just read down the list of them and their dollar amount.
Thank you.
The first one is for Law Enforcement and Police Training Association in the amount of $25,000. The next one is for American Rescue Workers in the amount of $20,000. LeComming Early Learning Team, which is for the Ready Rosie product, in the amount of $16,684. The next one is for Fire Tree Place in the amount of $40,000. Next is for the LeComming County Historical Society in the amount of $20,000. The next one is for the Community Arts Center in the amount of $25,000. The next one is for LeComming Police Camp Cadet Foundation in the amount of $3,000. The next is for LeComming County Senior Citizens in the amount of $10,000. The next one is for Williamsport Regional Airport in the amount of $78,360, and that one is for a grant match that the county does on an annual basis. The next one is for the LeComming County Industrial Development Authority in the amount of $3,000. And the last one is for the LeComming County Library System in the amount of $1,281,912, and that is the same as last year's amount.
And could you let the public know which, where these monies were funded, come out of?
Yes. Act 13 is for the L.E.A., Law Enforcement Association, American Rescue Workers, Ready Rosie, the LeComming Learning Team, Fire Tree, the Historical Society, the Community Arts Center, and Camp Cadet, and the Senior Citizens Airport capital request, industrial audit, Industrial Development Authority, and the Library System are all from the general fund.
So.
And did you need the dollar amount for those as well?
No, that's not necessary. Thank you.
And I'd just like to add this. This is discretionary upon the Commissioners. We can either fund this or not. And over the years, a lot of the outside agency requests were put in place for maybe two, three, four years to get them over the hump. And I see a number of these people that we award this money to as vital in our community. When you take a look at the American Rescue Workers, Fire Tree Place, the Historic Society, and the Community Arts, they all bring in some type of quality of life or educational component to drive people out of poverty. Not always easy decisions to make as to when or how much we're going to fund these programs. But the one, the county library system is the largest one, and we supported it forever. And I know they're experiencing, you know, some difficult times right now. And I would like the public to step up and help them fund certain projects that otherwise wouldn't be funded in our pocket to them. So give them a call, see what you can do. Any small donation is greatly appreciated, and the people over there that work for the library and bar are fantastic, dedicated people who play a vital role in our community.
I think one of the things that we can be proud of with all of these is that we are, as Commissioner Messeir said, taking a discretionary step with things that we don't necessarily have to do, whether it's the senior citizens or any of them. And, you know, we know that our airport has had struggles, but we're going to continue to fight to have air service from this community because it's very important to the economic development. And I think that we can be proud of the fact that as a community, we actually have a library system so that if you live in Jersey Shore, you don't have to drive 30 minutes to a library. If you live in Hughesville, there's a library. And that's something that not every county has. And as I've been involved as the representative for the Commissioners to the System Board, I think you were one year, a couple of years, you prior term Commissioner Messeir. You know, I've come to appreciate having visited other counties where they don't have an integrated library system. Every library is on its own. We get a real benefit by having an integrated system because it means that instead of having I.S. problems that are dealt with at each little library, they use a common resource. And the same with other kinds of resources. So I think with all these, we've done a good job of trying to reach out in the community.
And the library system is six, I believe, right? Six libraries?
Yes. Yes.
So that 1.28 million goes over the six libraries?
Right.
And again, you look down through the list, you know, I want to thank the Camp Cadet last year. They did not have a camp. They received the monies and they returned them because they didn't have a camp. They could have kept the monies, but they returned them. So that helps the youth, a lot of these help the youth, people that are in need, the different agencies that are vital to our community. You look at all the help the rescue workers have done and the early education. And again, the airport is a match. If we don't match that, they don't get their grant. And we continue to be in negotiations with other airlines and try to resolve, to try to bring the best solution to that airport in the immediate future and the distant future. So it's something that is being worked on daily. We're thankful that we do have these funds, Act 13 funds to help these agencies, so it benefits our community.
And one of the things I'd be remiss if I didn't say is that there's a bill in this budget appropriation in the House and the Senate to increase the amount that the state puts towards the libraries by a very modest amount. And if you're out there in the audience, it would behoove to call our local state representatives and senator and encourage them to support that. Do you know there are more libraries than there are McDonald's in the state of Pennsylvania? And at the same time, the state appropriates $90 million just for charter school transportation, but appropriates only approximately $57 million for all the libraries. So without passing judgment on what happens with the charter school transportation, it says something about where are we going to make our commitments? And I hope I have those exact numbers correct, and I'm sure Mr. Stout might know them also if I've made an error here or there. But you get the general picture. We really, we really do want to try to help improve the literacy in our community.
Okay, thank you. This time I ask for a motion to accept action item 7.7.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
7.8 with John Stahl, voting on Second Amendment to Agreement with GEO Reentry Services.
Morning, John.
Morning. John Stahl, Deputy Chief of the Probation. I'm here to present the amendment to the agreement between LeComming County and GEO Reentry Services LLC. This would be Second Amendment to the current agreement with GEO Reentry Services. LeComming County entered in a one-year extension of the current contract in December of 2020. Since that time, we've seen a significant increase. We've actually seen a significant increase in the use of reentry services in the past year dating back to the start of COVID-19. However, with the current extension, the daily average population for participants at reentry services were contracted. GEO was contracted with us to service up to 100 participants per day. January, February, and March, we have seen overages of about 100 in the contract. We are charged an additional $13 per day per participant. This proposal here is to increase the daily average from 100 to 125 and would allow us to pay at a fixed rate. Currently, we pay, we're contracted for $714,000 annually or $59,500 monthly if we stay at 100 or below. Like I said, over the last three months, we've seen overages. And looking at trends over the last year, we're on pace to spend approximately $24,000 over what we're currently budgeted for at $714,000. So this proposal is for, to increase the daily average from 125, from 100 to 125 at a fixed monthly rate of $60,833.33 or $730,000 annually. That is for, that rate would remain the same until the end of 2023. And in the third year of the amendment, we would see a 2% increase.
John, I want to thank you and Director McDermott for negotiating with GEO to get the best rate. You went back and forth. Thank GEO for working with us. The great thing about this program is we now have a contract that runs through 2023 at the same slightly rate increase. We're looking at increasing our clients from 100 to 125 to be utilized by this program. And then at that point after, it goes to a 2% increase. So thank you for working in negotiations to a fixed contract through the next three years and then a 2% increase after that. As I stated on Friday at the reentry coalition meeting, the county from working in the system was going in the wrong direction. They were talking about building another prison at $40 million back in 2013. And this was part of the study to bring a reentry program into the county. Since 2014 September, we've seen it work. We've seen the reductions. I'm very excited that through the help of GEO, we were able to establish, reestablish the reentry coalition, which is approximately 100 volunteers in the community that, to assist the reentry coordinator that we've reestablished to help reduce prison overcrowding. Because at the time, we were going in the wrong direction. We were spending a million dollars in overcrowding. And that's just in the prison system. That doesn't talk about prescriptions, medical costs. That's just in overcrowding. So that cost could be even significantly higher back then. So since then, we have not had the overcrowding problems. We've seen this happen in other counties where they've discontinued your reentry program. They went in a different direction, and they paid dearly in overcrowding cost. So I believe this is a win-win situation. It's a great partnership with GEO. They have come to us with their concerns and saying, make recommendations to us that this might be the best route to go by evidence-based practices, and so are constantly working with us to do the best product for our county. So I want to thank you and your team for working on this contract and negotiating something that I think is cost beneficial for our taxpayers.
Now, there's a story behind this contract as well that's never told. GEO Reentry is a fairly large company. They have over 100 facilities throughout the nation, right? As I can recall. And as we meet with John, we hear how often our reentry is used throughout the nation, that the evidence base that they're getting off of our reentry is being taught in other reentry programs, which makes you really appreciate the hard work that the judges, the adult probation, and juvenile put in to this. You know, that, if you didn't put the time in and the judges didn't utilize it, the DA didn't utilize it, this would be a worthless program. But instead, because of that dedication and the hard work that you do, I mean, there's a tremendous amount of data that you gather every day. We can sit there and say, hey, we have a system and a program that's worth the money. And I hope it continues to go in that direction. Another thing that you don't hear a lot of, and I'll probably ask you this question, is that there was, you know, lawsuits going on with the pharma. I read a little bit about settlements. Nothing's been settled so far. But you don't hear so much about the heroin and the addictions. And trust me, it's still prevalent. There is still a problem. Some may have switched to different drugs, but we're seeing an uptick in nuisance crimes and, you know, robberies and things like that. We're not letting our guard down, but we still have to address these community issues, and it's not going to be easy.
John, I want to thank you. You got a promotion, but you stuck with overseeing this day reporting program. And I think that part of you overseeing it is what helped to be able to negotiate that because there wasn't a new person there who didn't necessarily know the history. So I think it's important that you did that, and I want to thank you for doing that. And I think it's important for the public to differentiate. This actually says GEO reentry. It's day reporting. We also have a reentry coalition, which Commissioner Messeir alluded to. I'm sorry, Commissioner Metzger alluded to. I was at the meeting also. And GEO's got that contract, and they've done a good job of trying to pull together all the people in the community who are going to help people go from the prison back into their community life. And that, that's sort of really reentry. This, and this is, this program is important. It keeps people out of prison. It's the day reporting. This is, just so the public understands, people are out in the community working or doing whatever they're supposed to be doing, and then they report here, and they participate in an educational program to try to change their behavior, right? Yeah. So we sometimes confuse them. I mean, I guess you can view them all as reentry in the sense that we're trying to get people back into living a normal life. But I did want to point that out because I think that the job that you and Director McDermott did was very important in terms of keeping the cost down. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd just like to point out what Commissioner Messeir had said, that there is a lot that goes on behind the scenes, and there are a lot of county employees that are vested. And it took, took a long time, took seven years. I could see the daily prison population email in my sleep because that's how the day starts every day, is looking at that, you know? And where, you know, where can we, you know, where can we do better with reentry services? Because that certainly was a goal, right? From the very start was, in 2010, 2011, we saw an increase in prison population to include overcrowding, right? But when I think of reentry services, and I know they won't take credit for it, but I don't think of GEO. It's Mike Bowden and his staff and John Hogan. And it's the people that work at that facility and oversee that that make that possible, so.
I'm just going to add this as well. It's located right under neither of our offices. And so we have the opportunity to see people evolve. And when I say that, I can't tell you how many young people, I mean, first time, if they're going to that facility, oh, it's a waste of my time. I'm just doing it because I was ordered to do it. And they don't get it, okay? And then they find themselves back, you know? They, you know, our adult probation officers don't tolerate that too well, right? And how, you know, they're sitting, they're sitting there complaining constantly, and then all of a sudden, it clicks. And you talk to them, you know, it might be another month, and you talk to them, and they got it. And then the adult probation officers are not their enemy. They're their ally. And I think that's the turning point where they make that decision. Hey, I gotta, I really gotta straighten up. I have family, I have kids, I have mom and dad. And it is, it's a pleasure, you know, to see that transformation in those people. It does work, and I'll continue to support it for as long as I can.
We heard that on the coalition call the other day. We had a graduate who was on the call, Commissioner Maribito heard her, who's now joined the coalition to help. She wants to get back to the community. And she thanked her PO. She looked at him as an enemy, and she thanked him publicly on the call. You know, she saw that he was truly wanting the best for her and cared about her.
Any more of that?
Yep. Okay. Thank you again, and we have a motion to accept action item 7.8.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So carry it.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
7.9 Nikki Dotshall regarding the discussion of the payment as a 2021 actuary ADEC. Nikki?
Yes, I'm here. Hi, Commissioners.
Morning, Nikki.
Just going over this, see if we're going to start contributing to the retirement fund on a monthly basis.
Yes.
I'll move to, I'll move to make the payment on a monthly basis. To the actuarially determined employer contribution is what ADAC is, I believe.
Yes.
I will second that as long as we have discussion.
Okay, we have a second, and at this point, we'll have discussion or comments.
Boy, this was, this was a long debate in what we should do. The pension is very important to county retirees and to the county as a whole. The county, since I've been here, has been almost putting in $2 million a year into their pension. And you've seen the stock markets lately, and our fund is doing quite well. I think it was in the top 2% in the nation. And we still contribute to the ADAC. But how? And how do you protect your money? You know, we hear people selling stocks to get, you know, take some profits. And we were looking at our way in a volatile market, which it doesn't appear to be yet. And it's maybe because of the stimulus programs, but how do we protect that money? And I believe we came to the conclusion that we would pull somehow into a cash position. I think that was a little over $10 million, which we all agreed to. I would have liked to seen it a little bit more, but regardless. And the money that we are going to start to contribute for this year will be also put into that cash position, correct? So that we can pay obligations.
That is correct.
So, right. We have a tremendous amount of money still working for us, but we protected a certain, I think it was 5%, 6%.
We were going to go 5% as recommended by you that, and you wanted to go up to, I believe, 10, and we agreed at 8.
And that has all been converted to cash and it is in the cash account.
And we will use that money as well to pay our obligation. This way, you know, at least we protected that much.
Yeah. So, the ADAC for the public is determined by actuaries who look at the age of our workforce, the life expectancy for men and women, how many years they have, when expected retirement rates, ages are going to be, et cetera. And they put all this into a computer and they say, look, you need to maintain a certain amount of money in the pension fund. And actually, today, it has about 150 million. And I think we, we saw that we would expect it to grow. 158 million.
158.
And we expect it to have to grow to 550 million. Was it 30 years or 20 years?
30.
30 years, to be able to meet our pension obligation. So, every employee in this county puts 8% into the pension. I just want the public to understand that the employees have been contributing to their pensions since they began. We just, when I say we, meaning the county as an employer, began to contribute, I think in 2000 or was it in 1990? Yeah.
I think it was about 2005.
2005, excuse me. Prior to that, the pension has been in existence since the 1970s, I believe.
74, at least.
74. And the employees had always contributed all those years, but there wasn't a requirement or a need for the county. Part of that has to do with the maturity of our workforce. As we sit and we listen to people working here for 30 years, 40 years, you can see that the workforce has matured. And so, the pension pressures become different. I just did a quick calculation. There are about 530 full-time employees. If you take 40 hours, some of them work 37 and 1/2, and you multiply it by 530, and then you divide it, take that by, you know, the number of days they work in a year. And you take our 2 million. It works out to the county putting about $1.50 or so an hour on top of what people make, give or take. So, what that really means is that as, as an employer, we're saying, listen, we agree to pay you this much money, we want you to contribute 8%, which is, which is a fair amount of money coming out of people's paycheck. And we're going to, we're going to put in this much towards your retirement because we value you as an employee. So, and I, you know, I know there are a lot of folks in the public who don't have that situation. They don't have pensions and so forth. I hope that we look at it not as, well, darn it, I don't have a pension, therefore, I don't want those public sector workers to get a pension. As much, as instead, look at it as, look, maybe I deserve a pension too in the private sector where I work. And begin to make the changes that have to be made so that we have all people being able to retire with dignity. And I'll just, last thing, and then I'll be quiet. Study out of Boston College on retirement security. People who have defined benefit pensions do not utilize public services at the same rate that people who don't have those pensions. When I say public services, I'm talking about food stamps. I'm talking about liheep. I'm talking about all the programs that we end up passing to help people who are at risk, especially, you know, you're 75 years old and you don't have enough funds to be able to put a boiler in your house. And we have a program where we appropriate funds. So, that's a good thing because it helps people plan in their retirement to be able to take care of themselves. Last thing, anyone out there, you should be saving for retirement, no matter how old you are, no matter what age you are, you should be saving for your retirement. And whatever it is, however amount you put aside, but you should be doing it because it comes up fast on you.
Yeah, I just say the average county salary is about $40,000 gross. And after they pay their taxes, they do have 8% of their salary taken out. And you think 8% on 40,000 annually is a good chunk of money.
Right.
That they're paying in, so...
Right.
Okay. I have a motion to accept the action.
Do you have a motion?
Yes, we have a second, I'm sorry. All fair side?
Aye.
We're on discussion. Aye. So, Carrie?
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Nikki.
7.10, Sal Vicco voting on the 2021 liquid fuels allocation.
Good morning, Commissioners. Sal Vicco Transportation Planner with County Planning. This request is just for your approval to approve the county liquid fuels municipal allocations for 2021. The base allocation was $150,000. And we also had an additional $1,400 in funds going to six municipalities who attended local technical assistance program courses. They were virtual, but they still have the courses during the 2020 calendar year.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Hearing that, you have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. So, Carrie, thank you.
7.11, Director McDermott voting on the continuance of the declaration of disaster emergency.
Commissioners, seeking your approval to extend the disaster declaration for an additional nine days through the end of June 2021.
Okay. This also allows us to continue to receive federal funding. Okay. Motion to accept the declaration.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. So, Carrie?
7.12, Shannon Rosman voting on the redevelopment assistance capital project.
Morning, Shannon.
Morning. Shannon Rosman, planning and community development director. Before you, we currently have a rapid grant for the relief well project. As you know, our bids came back higher than we expected. So, what we've decided to do is apply for an additional redevelopment assistance capital project grant in the amount of $750, $750,000 to help offset some of those additional costs due to the cost of steel, the cost of the COVID requirements, the cost of some of the additional items that were found during the inspections by the, by the bidders. So, what we'll be doing, and I have a meeting in 10 minutes about that, is to apply to the state for that additional amount and then rebrand the project this fall.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
Oh, and this, this is a budgeted item. It's just, we haven't budgeted quite so much.
This is, this is a very important meeting.
Yes. And I'm feeling that from you, too.
This is how government works. You know, we, we have projects and we need to go to our state reps and our senators and try to find funds. I think our planning department does a fantastic job in seeking it. I'm not, I'm not sure what the last figure it was, but we had, like, planning department was, at one time, $25 million they brought into this county in that one year, which is a lot of money. And it improves our county and our position.
Yeah. And it's a whole variety of grants that we're trying to go after. It's not just one single grant stream. But I, we have to apply for this tomorrow, which is why it's so urgent that we had it on today's agenda. So, I'll have to have that signed back today.
Will do.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I have a motion.
I'll move to approve the application for the dis?
Second.
All fair side?
That one's signed and the next one's signed before you guys.
Okay, thank you.
We're going to skip down real quick. Director McDermott and Ken George are going to talk about 7.18 with air management technologies.
One second. Shannon and Director, please give the Senator our regards and explain that we appreciate what he's doing for us and that we hope he'll be successful. Senator Yaw, he's been successful in getting funds in the past and...
Will do.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We're doing...
No, we did it.
No, we did that. We're skipping down there to 7.18 right now.
Just so I can go over this before I leave.
Go ahead.
Matt McDermott, Director of Administration for the county. So, before you Commissioners, you have two items for air management technologies, which is the firm that we selected to do the HVAC for Third Street Plaza. You have the professional services agreement, which I'm requesting that you approve pending final review of air management. And then, secondly, there's an addendum to the proposal and standard terms and conditions. And I'm seeking your approval on that item as well. No conditions on it.
And is Jay David Stone on the line?
He is.
Okay. So, the county would like to give Mike Wiley a job well done. And we, we're requesting that...
He gets a time off award, yeah.
A time off award. And I'll tell you why. At 11:20, you know, at 11:35...
Well, started at 11:24.
Yeah. We got Mike on the phone and said, we have issues. And he's, he's telling us what a lawyer should tell us, people, don't do this, do this, do this. And we had him to do some research. And we said, oh, by the way, you have 23 minutes to get it done. And he had it, I don't know how he got it done.
He had to call the company and make contact with them before noon.
But he did. And thank him for us.
I will. It's the only productive thing he's done.
I'd be sure of that.
We censored that just...
Thanks to Ken George, also our Director of Facilities, for the good work on bidding this out and taking all the information from the vendors and amidst all the other things we're asking Ken to do and to get us a, another project that they will oversee, which is the installation of this HVAC in Third Street Plaza across the street. So, we really do thank him with all he's got going on with the, with the rebuild of Magistrate Solomon's Building. He put this together with the Director of Administration and, and as they said, the lawyer, Mike Wiley.
And Maya.
And Maya, yes. Maya, thank you for your input, too.
Matt, did we take, do you remember, did we take a bond out for this?
Yeah, we did. This is, this was on a, in a bond yesterday.
It was in a bond.
Yeah.
And just to get back to the point that this was a bond taken out maybe a year or two ago.
Right.
So, and so, when you look at the, when you look at the budget, then that's going to show a deficit. We have the money. We borrowed the money, but this year, we're going to spend it. And so, it's, it's not going to show as revenue this year. It's going to show as an expense.
The unfortunate thing about a bond is if you don't use it the year you get it issued...
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a certain amount of time to use it, so, but, okay.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion to accept action item 7.18.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, approved.
Okay. So, we'll go back to 7.13 with Jerry Kennedy to vote on the annual support renewal for the software.
And Commissioners, I draw your attention to the red print on Jerry's memo.
Morning, Commissioners. Jerry Kennedy, Director of Information Services. This is a support renewal for $109,262.07 for the software that is in use by the Assessment Office. This is a 2021 budgeted item.
Any questions or comments? Hearing that, kind of motion to accept.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. So, Carrie, thank you.
7.14 and 7.15, Jason Yorks from RMS. Jason, are you on the line?
Yes, ma'am.
Morning, Jason.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Identify what department you're with and your name.
Jason Yorks, Director of Oconomie County Resource Management Services.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, 7.14 is basically an information item. We will be going out to bid for Bleach Eight and landfill gas pipe cleaning project. The, this project will be going through engineering for Bartlett Judas. Penn, we will be using Penn bid, which will be, I think, our first opportunity at the landfill to use Penn bid, so we're pretty excited about that. This project will be funded through the closure funds that we have set aside for this kind of work. This will be part of a long-term project that's going towards part of exposure of some old fields that we have here at the landfill. That's an information item. 7.15, 7.15 is for the approval for purchase of replacement wheels for our compactor, St. Karen. The, the amount is $127,495. This was not on a 2021 budget. We were expecting this to be the following year. We have, as we discussed, we made arrangements to pull some items off of our 2021 budget so we can afford to do this. These wheels are the wheels that are in the garbage all day, every day on the compactors. And the last set, we have, I think we're around 16,000 hours on them on our old compactor. So, the wheels, our diameter gets wore down, plus the teeth in them are severely worn. So, it doesn't give us the optimal compaction with our machine. So, seeking your approval for that, Commissioners.
The fact that this isn't a budgeted item, you say you're taking the monies from other sources?
Yes, sir.
Or not, or eliminating another project?
We're, we're eliminating the purchase of, we were looking to purchase a device to use as a trailer back vac, bag vacuum system for on the slopes to help assist with cleaning up bags and debris during high wind events. But we will be pulling that off in order to make this a purchase available.
Okay. Okay, I have a motion to accept.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. So, Carrie?
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
7.16, Ken George, voting on the purchase of materials for metal roofing.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ken George, Director of County Maintenance. I'm asking for your approval to purchase the roofing materials for the Solomon build to replace the roof.
Okay. And again, we talked about this with the additions of the renovations on the building. It just makes sense now to go ahead and do the roof. It's either paid now or paid much more later. Share a story that I shared with Commissioner Mesar this past week about my dad when he was in the building business. A gentleman who's still alive that bought his first house for my dad. He was newly, newly wed, had a newborn, and my dad said to him, I can put an extra garage on your house for $1,000 and along with the home. And he says, I don't know. He says, I got new job, I got a baby. And he says, I'm going to probably have to pass on it. And my dad says, well, you probably pay 10 times the amount when you go, you're ready to do it. Well, this gentleman told me when he finally did it, it was $10,000. So, it just shows you either you can do it now or pay, put it off, and it's going to cost, cost us a lot more down the line. So, in my, in my opinion, it makes sense now to do it since we're doing all the renovations at the same time. So it might, in my opinion, make sense now to do it since we're doing all the renovations at the same time.
Yeah.
Yeah, when you have a, when you have a metal roof and it's that old, there's, there's rubber washers that go into the screws and aren't to the top, and, and I just am replacing mine on one of my buildings. So we looked at that, and it was, it was well worth the investment.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, kind of motion to accept?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. So Kerry.
And then Ken also has 7.17. The agreement was select security.
Yes, Commissioners, I'm asking for your approval. This is for the fire alarm system for the PRC building itself at 41,636.55. It is a budgeted item. The system we have in there now is failing and cannot be, the parts are not available to replace it or to repair it.
We have residents living there. We cannot take any chance of any disaster happening, so we must replace this now and do our due diligence to make sure it's done right. Some motion to accept?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
7.19 through 7.23, Mark Egley.
He's up here for his last hurrah.
That's correct. Good morning Commissioners, I'm Mark Egley, Children and Youth Administrator for the county. My first item is an agreement with Families United Network for Foster Care and Residential Services. The per diems range from a low of $28.65 a day up to a high of $208.07 a day, depending on the level of care provided.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Fair side?
Aye.
Aye. Kerry. Thank you.
The next contract is a contract with Taylor Diversion Programs. It's for residential services, and the per diem there is $208 a day.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. So Kerry.
Thank you, Commissioners. We had one child in there for five days at the beginning of the preschool year, so it was, we were just waiting for their rates to get approved by the state, so we have no one in that program now.
Did you have anyone in the Families United Program?
Yes, yeah, we did have some foster care kids in there, in some homes. The next item is a, an amendment to the, or an agreement with Big Brothers Big Sisters of Northeastern Pennsylvania not to exceed $28,434. This is the annual contract that allows us to use and have access to Big Brothers Big Sisters licensing and promotion materials, their matching software and all of those types of things, and for oversight and participation in some of their fundraising events as well. It's an annual contract. Big Brothers and Big Sisters of Northeastern Pennsylvania is a new nonprofit entity. It used to be through Big Brothers Big Sisters of the Bridge, through the Scranton Diocese, the Diocese of Scranton, and they have broken away and formulated their own nonprofit, and so it's taken some time for us to get the budget numbers around and to see what our share of the five-county program of Big Brothers and Big Sisters would be.
Any motion to accept?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
I will abstain on this one because I sit on the auxiliary board of the Big Brothers Big Sisters, so I'll abstain from the vote. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners.
My next item is an amendment with Ironcutter Creative. If you recall, Ironcutter has worked on a number of projects for us, and this was for our foster care promotion and advertising work that we were doing. All we're doing, asking here is for an extension of the timeframe to June 30th. It was to expire December of 2020, and the overall amount is still $7,700.
I'll move to approve.
All fair side? I'll second, sorry. Yeah. All fair side?
Aye. That's the website.
Correct, correct. So we're doing some social media promotions and things like that to recruit and get more foster, foster care homes. My, last item is a contract with Kids Peace National Centers. It's for foster care residential services. Their per diems range from $60 a day up to $364 a day. I do have some kids in that program at this point in their, in their foster care, not in their, we have no children in residential programs, so, so we would be at the lower end of those per diems.
No motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
So Kerry.
I told Matt I'd take care of this one. Stay right, stay right there. We're voting on a resolution to acknowledge the retirement of Mark Egley. And, I don't know if we have that resolution.
Yes, it's in there.
Yep, right here.
Okay.
You want to read it?
Sure. Signing the retirement of Mark Egley. As Children and Youth Administrator on March 31st, 2021, and until a successor, successor is, or successor is appointed, Keith Wagner, the joint's executive director, is delegated and authorized to process and sign any documents necessary to maintain the day-to-day operation of the Lycum County Children and Youth Services Agency. This resolution and authorization is approved on the day of March 2021 by the Lycum County Commissioners. I just have a couple of comments. Mark, you're gonna be dearly missed, and I, I, I have to say this. I'm not sure anybody following you is gonna be able to do the job that you've done. It's, it's, it's something in this, in our county that the residents, they don't understand. They don't see it, the work that you have to do with our youth today. And on a number of occasions, you, your staff, they take these kids in, they, they, they take it at heart. Weekends, Sundays, Saturday evenings, I mean, your staff is just dedicated, calling to them. But I believe that the reason they do so is because of your leadership. And again, a very calm person who has a tremendous burden on your shoulders all the time, every day. And there's nobody, nobody that could have done this job better than you, my friend, and we appreciate your work. And I'm sure Skip's out here, he's, he may wanna say something as well.
Skip, would you like to come up and say a few words?
I would not expect to do that. I was gonna say, "First of all, to him," but certainly from working with children, youth for over.
Could you come up to the podium and step up because we're on, we're on camera?
You can pick it up, huh?
Yep, so we get you. Thank you.
I'm working with children, youth for well over 40 years now, and starting with a gentleman by the name of Jim Stopper, who was in the infancy of the Children and Youth Agency, and then advancing up through Mark, who has seen great progress, great advancements in the way that families and certainly the community are benefited by the staff, and certainly the Commissioners are backing him up in every instance. But Mark is gonna be a hard act to follow, as Commissioner Missara has said here. But Mark certainly has been a guiding force in this agency. He has come through a great deal of number of different developments and advancements, not only for resource children and foster children being out of the care, custody, and expenses of the state and the county, but also for the county itself. So I, I, from a, basically a solicitor standpoint, I'm gonna miss not having him there all too. And I think that every, every good thing should come to Mark, and certainly we appreciate it, and I'm sure the staff feels very much the same way. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Mark, what year did you begin?
2003, actually, March of 2003. So it's been 18 years here. And I've always done human services, that's been my whole career. I started out in working with Head Start and then going to the early childhood daycare field and worked, actually had, ran my own nonprofit agency for a number of years until we merged with the YMCA in 99, and then from there, in 2003, I came here.
What was the agency that you emerged in?
It was, we were Lycum Childcare Services. So we were a bi-county childcare organization for a number of years. If you recall, the old daycare center that was in the Webster School of Memorial Avenue, that was the, that started the, that was a single-site childcare agency or childcare program when I, when I started. And from there, we grew it into a multi-site, two-county operation with, I think we had four or five centers when I left, and probably about 18 or 20 before and after school programs, all located in the, in the local elementary schools and stuff like that. So at the time, it was, you know, quite rewarding to be able to expand those services across two counties, so. And then the opportunity to come here. The thing that I liked about the switch from working in childcare and early childhood education to going to work with children, youth, was I stopped worrying about having enough income. You kind of lived and died by whether, whether the economy was good and people were working and needed childcare. So without that, you know, in down times, you know, folks didn't need as much childcare, and so I was worried about how am I gonna keep the agency moving? With, with working for the county, we were assured of funding through state and federal sources, and my job's really shifted from, from worrying about how I was gonna make sure I had enough revenues just to sustain operations to really, how do I manage the revenue sources to maximize the federal and state dollar and conserve the local dollar? And so I think we've gotten very good at that, and quite honestly, all, all my success is really due to the people that I've been fortunate enough to be surrounded by. When you have good staff, it really makes your life and your job a whole lot easier, and that's one thing that I've been fortunate enough to have, is good people that have worked beside me. We have great casework staff. We have very little turnover, which is one of the reasons that we're able to manage the changes that keep coming from the federal and state level. Believe me, it's a challenge every day to, to address all those regulatory requirements and stay ahead of the curve with the next thing that's coming down from the state or the federal government. And so you can't do that with a bunch of rookie staff, and in most counties, there's a high turnover in this field. And so we're extremely fortunate to be able to retain our staff. We have good staff. You're right, they're very committed, they're very passionate about their work, and so that's really one of the reasons for our success, is because we've been able to keep good people and support them and give them the tools to do their job to the best of their abilities. And we've also had very good support elsewhere. I mean, we have an excellent relationship with our court system. We have a very dedicated judge. The school systems, we, we have caseworkers that work in the schools that have done tremendous, have paid tremendous benefits and really strengthening that relationship between the school and our child welfare system. Those things have all been very positive. That's been modeled elsewhere across the state because of some of the initiatives, initiatives that we have started here. So it's those types of things that have helped us be successful as, as an agency in trying to certainly strengthen families, protect children, and, and make our community a place where people wanna to live and raise their families. And I think we've done a good job of that overall over the years.
And, and you know, I wanna pick up on some of the things you've said, because I, I just wanna thank you as someone who came in as a Commissioner, and you know, your willingness always to help me understand the intricate, crazy system of how we allocate funds between the federal, state, and local government, and, and your patience with us in helping us to understand that, and, and your commitment to always trying to maximize the federal and state dollars. And I think that the public, as elected officials who look at the contracts and deal with it, we often don't understand all the intricacies. And you're right, it's true that there, there is a dedicated staff, but there has to be a dedicated leader, too. It's a two-way street. Staff will, will stay with a dedicated leader who they, they think is looking out for them, and so we, we wanna thank you for that, because as Commissioner Missara said, there are many families out there that have never had to utilize your services, and there are families who've had to utilize their services. But every family has benefited from the fact that our children who go to school with children who have troubles in their lives are able to be successful and interact with their children who may not need Children and Youth Services in a way that's positive. And so I think of the families that all three of us run into in the community who have difficulties in their lives, and, and you, you folks always are working to do that, and you're working behind the scenes and building the infrastructure. Kids Peace, all these contracts we approve, it's the infrastructure so that when the extreme situation comes of, of a drug bust or of someone being involved, where, where kids are involved in a shooting or something like that. But even the problems that happen when we have parents who all of a sudden experience a death in a family or some other crisis that makes it hard for them to care for their children, you folks have the infrastructure there. And what a change you've seen in the way the federal government approaches it, right?
Absolutely.
Over, even in the short years that I've been here, there's been a change. So I wanna thank you for the 18 years. We are gonna miss you. We do hope you enjoy your retirement. It's well deserved.
Thank you.
And we'll be calling you all the time with questions.
That's okay, that's fine. I've told all the staff that I'm only a phone call away. So I'll certainly continue to help and support the agency and the county. Every, the guiding principle I've always used is really trying to make decisions that are in the best interest of the county and the community. It's not what's in the best, my interest or the best interest of maybe our staff or, or someone else. It's really what, when you look at it in the big picture, what's in the best interest of, of our communities and our county? And that's kind of the use, the things I've used to try to guide my decision-making over the years, so.
Thank you.
Mark, I wanna thank you. There's two things you mentioned there that, that make, that stand out for me that I'm glad you mentioned, that I saw from you. I, I saw a lot of turnover in the past with Children and Youth. Next door, you know, we called down there and, "What do you mean the caseworker's not there anymore?" Well, they left, and that's, that's not happening anymore. And I think that's because of leadership under you, that you mentioned. It gives you that stability, and it gives that stability then goes along with experience, because you had the staff staying. The other thing that I think you're brilliant, brilliant at is leveraging money. And you've leveraged federal and state dollars so local dollars didn't have to be the majority of the money. And you were an expert at it, and I admired you and respected you for it. We had conversations, you know, about how you did that, and I always respected how you did that, and we're gonna, we're gonna miss you. Life is, is full of seasons. This is the next season, so we enjoy that, enjoy that season, and I hope that it's healthy and you get to do everything that you wanna do in retirement.
I hope so, too.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
And don't be a stranger.
No, I won't be.
Okay.
What are we voting on that resolution?
Uh, yes. Motion to accept the resolution.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Skip, thank you. Ed, I just saw you walk in. Would you like to say anything?
Absolutely, I can.
Yes.
Is that Ed?
That's Ed Robbins.
Ed, come, come to the podium.
The podium, please.
All right.
It's funny, I was thinking about you during his.
You really?
But I didn't notice.
That's what happened.
I feel younger, I, there's something that just comes off your shoulders. It'll start.
Max stress.
Would you like me to wear my mask?
No, you don't have to when you're.
Okay. Actually, I was, with the other hat that I wear now, working at the college, I was upstairs having conversations with Dave Goodwin, our intern, and then I was visiting with staff and coming down the elevator, walking across the hall, I heard Mark speaking, and I, I was in here actually earlier, right around 10 o'clock.
Okay.
I thought you guys might go with, with Mark at the beginning, but, so I stayed a little bit, went upstairs for a meeting, and was lucky enough to, to be here now for, for parts of his speech and of course, your words as well. As you can tell, this is off the cuff. I really didn't know this was gonna happen, but I can honestly say that I was one of the luckiest chiefs. the luckiest chiefs, the luckiest chief, when I was working to be able to have Mark as my counterpart over at Children and Youth. One of the things that I'm most proud of is our collaboration through the years because of what Mark had mentioned actually hits my heart and thugs on that emotion that we do what we do based only for the betterment of kids and families. And there are some counties out there that don't have the relationship, not only the personal relationship that we have, but also the professional relationship. And the benefactors of that are, of course, our staff, but also mainly the youth and families in our, in our, in our county. And we had some great trips to Mechanicsburg and Harrisburg. And I don't know if you guys know, but we actually did a workshop in our Juvenile Justice statewide conference on how we get stuff done as a senior wide director, as a JPO chief, that we shared in the mid-two thousands. He's a, he's a great man, he's a great person. And he will be missed and he did great work as well. So I could go on and on. I really, really could, but I can, I can also share that retirement's great. It really is. And, you know, we'll continue to, to, you know, I'm sure we'll cross paths and continue to do good work.
Yeah, thank you for the comments.
You're most welcome.
Good to see you.
Good to see you guys as well.
Thank you. Take care.
Thanks, Ed. I wouldn't miss it. I knew you were retiring. We'll be in touch. You bet.
Great, thank you. Okay. Commissioner's comments?
Commissioner's comments?
Yeah, I, I just got a couple real quick. I, I apologize, you know, my, my cell phone, I have to keep it on, but I keep it on vibrate and, and it still rings. I, I don't understand it and, you know, I guess a lot of people say that they're having, experiencing cell phone problems right now because their, your checks are coming. So I, I'll stay with the conspiracy theory. These, these people know what they're doing. Secondly, we, we had a meeting with Senator Casey and, and his staff. And we talked about a lot of, of issues facing our county and the 1.9 trillion dollar package that was voted on. But, but I, but I'll tell you what concerned me. He, he also mentioned the next package, the three trillion dollars. And I, I want people to read H R one. All right, this is a transformation of our government. When, when they talk about no IDs for voting, if you are in the government system, you're registered to vote, okay? That, that includes illegals. If they're collecting anything, they're registered to vote. This is not good. And I encourage all of, all of the citizens to contact their, their representatives and, or at least to, to get knowledge about this bill. Gun rights, okay? These, this could be the bill that changes us from democracy to socialism. And fight this with every ounce of your heart. Anybody can argue, well, it's going to help, help. BS. That's BS. This bill, they want us to depend upon him. When they're going to sit there and say, no, the federal government will decide how you run your election. Oh, that's not right. That is not right. That's the states, we, we are sovereign as a state and each state should run their own elections, okay? This is a major transformation. Read it and contact your legislators.
Thank you. Commissioner? So yeah, let me just follow up a little more on the meeting with Senator Casey. That has to do with the almost 22 million that Lightcoming County is going to get from the American Rescue Plan. So there were basically six counties on the call, Juniata, Mifflin, Northumberland, Snyder Union. Collectively, those counties are going to get about 135 million. And the three of us had sort of talked beforehand and we sort of identified what our reactions were to it. And I think generally, we, we were excited by the infusion of funds. We're also concerned about, obviously, this money has to be repaid. And hopefully, in our own community, we'll find a way to use it to stimulate economic growth and job creation so that we can, you know, have some forward motion. One of the things that I was struck by is, if you remember when Amazon was looking around for a place they were going to invest in, and they eventually did in, in Virginia, I think.
They were looking for a place in Hazelton.
A place in Hazelton, yes. Huge amounts of money, huge amounts of money. And I, I think that this is very good for us as a region in terms of infusion, infusing some investment in rural Pennsylvania. And I think the three of us, when we identified some of the capital projects for the next bill that Commissioner had talked about, Commissioner Metzger, Commissioner Messer, is, is on infrastructure. I think the three of us were agreed that broadband is extremely important. I don't want to speak for all three of us, but I think we, we identified it. We certainly identified water and sewer and MS four and election integrity, election integrity, making sure that we, we have resources. Also, something that, that, you know, what I'll call job training or community college and a place for people, you know, we, we have Penn College, which does a great job, but it's actually becoming more and more a four-year school. And what we don't really have is a community college the way they had WAC forty, forty, fifty years ago. And I, I, I shared with my colleagues, when you look at a T, they look at the T, they're very, the only community colleges are in Luzerne, Lightone, and now Luzerne has opened a branch in Watson Town. But you look down at Pittsburgh and Philadelphia, they have like ten or twelve community colleges clustered around there. So for us, the community college is important whether, and I'm not necessarily saying going, I'm building a new one, but what I am saying is finding a place for us to be able to get job training and the skills needed for our, our employers who always tell us that they have a problem recruiting people for employment. And, and also trying to do the things we can for population recovery and retention. So I think the three of us enjoyed the call. There's more work to do. We don't agree on everything, but the point is that we're trying to, to move ahead to make sure that the county has the infrastructure it needs to be able to be successful. Okay, anything else?
No.
Okay.
I just want to go over a couple of different things. I looked up the COVID numbers. I keep all the stats from every day going back till March, when this started. And basically, up till November the fourth, which is around Election Day, our county had 1,031 cases. 1,031 cases. And at that time, we had thirty-two deaths in the county. December the first, we had jumped up six deaths during the month of November, but our cases had doubled. We went up to 1,000, excuse me, 2,243. So over that month, we doubled in cases. This is where it gets significant. From December first to the beginning of January, we went from thirty-eight deaths to 180. And our cases went from 2,243 to 6,281. During the month of December, we jumped up 4,038 cases. Then if you go out to February first, we went from 180 deaths to 255 deaths. We started going in the other direction though. Cases were 8,160 cases. That was an increase of that month of 1,379 cases. So we actually started going down. We went from 4,038 cases down to 1,879 cases. And then in March, beginning of March, we increased another 1,195 cases. So cases still continued to go down. Our deaths went up slightly.
What were the deaths?
288.
And what were the cases?
Total cases was 9,355, but it was an increase of the month of 1,195 cases. Now during the month of March, cases continued to decline. We've gone up 735 cases during the month of March. And we're up to 307 deaths. So we went up another nineteen deaths, deaths during the month of March. So you see the, the county got hit hard, especially during the months of December and January. They've gone down drastically since January fourth. We've been, you know, dropping 4,000, down to 2,000, down to 1,200, now they're down to 750. So I think we're going in the right direction. We have 10,000 some positives, which is about one out of every 13 residents. But we have a million cases positive in the state. We have 12.8 million people. That's about one out of every 13 people in the state. So we're on the same pace that the state is for positive cases. We had a meeting last week with a, a grassroots group. We'll continue to evaluate their request. But at the same time, as I stated to them, I would encourage people to get the vaccine if it's available. That's the biggest thing right now. We don't have the vaccines available. Right now, as of this morning, 15% of the United States is vaccinated fully. 15%. And 28.6% has had at least one shot. And that has doubled in the last week nationally. And I believe that's because of Johnson and Johnson's one-shot vaccine has increased that. And I believe we're going to probably double it nationally within the next two weeks because of those extra vaccines. However, we don't have them in Pennsylvania. We have a farm show arena, has PPE sitting in it. We don't know why it was sitting in the farm show arena. We have an administration that won't tell how many vaccines have been wasted. It hasn't been disclosed. And that's a concern. That's wasted vaccines. We have to know, we have to know why they're being wasted. And we need more vaccines. We need more vaccines in this area for those that want to get it. And as I stated on that call, I would encourage anyone who wants to get a vaccine or who has a comorbidity to get a vaccine. Would I tell somebody, you need to get a vaccine? No, I will not say that to a person. That is their right to get a vaccine. And God forbid if something happened where they would pass away. I don't want that on my conscience. And there have been people that have been, that, that's happened to. There's very few and far between, but it has happened. But I would encourage a person to get a vaccine if they truly want to. I think our goal is to continue to press the DOH to get more vaccines in this area for those that want to get the vaccine. And to try to educate people that if you do have health issues, you do have an age issue, it, it makes sense to get it. But I don't think it should be mandatory. I think that schools that are making mandatory or for parts of the government that say you need to do this in order to do this, I think that's the wrong approach. And I don't think it should be shoved down people's throat. I don't think it's appropriate. But at the same time, I will encourage people to get the vaccine and, and I, I think we need to continue to be diligent in that, in that aspect. But I think overall, our area has done well, with the exception, these stats are, they're the, they're the facts. And you can see what happened to us during the month of December and the month of January. It started, it started going up after Election Day, but it has started to go down in the other direction basically since February first. And we continue to pray that it goes in that direction and that we can get an end to this so that we can start to return to some form of normalcy.
So actually, I'm glad you brought that up. The three of us met last Tuesday by Zoom with, with this group, Let's End COVID, which is made up of some retired healthcare professionals, doctor, some professionals from local colleges, some business people, some employees from our local community and social and health agencies. And they're asking the commissioners to allocate $50,000 from the 1.89 million that we have for COVID to try to educate people about that the vaccine is safe and, and the benefits of getting it with the goal to try to get 80% of our community vaccinated. And one of the things that Commissioner Metzger and I discussed yesterday was trying to get the Department of Health to put a mass vaccination center, which is what, what you're referring to, right? Try to get them to put one in our community.
For those people that want to go get vaccinated, it's close by.
Right. And, and, and so one of the things that the, one of the people, Beth McMahon, who, who has led the COVID response at Lock Haven and, and because of efforts of her and other people at Lock Haven, they've been able to keep the university open with very few cases. And one of the things that, that she pointed out is that people do respond to public health campaigns. I mean, she's actually a PhD in public health. But in other words, think about all the campaigns that we had, whether it's the flu vaccine or the safety belt or not drinking and driving, that people respond to education. In other words, you, you, you introduce the idea, you educate people about the, the results, you advocate, and then there's actually a change in behavior. So one of the things she said to us was, do you know anyone who's had the flu this year? I don't think anybody put their hand up. And what she pointed out to us is that 92% or so of the public gets the flu vaccine. Like we all.
That's incorrect, Commissioner.
That may not be that high. Maybe.
It's 50%.
50%.
50%.
Okay, so 50%.
According to the CDC.
Right. Maybe what she, there was, there was a, I don't, I can't remember the 92%. But the, the point being that as a result of people getting vaccinated, we don't run into people getting the flu at the way we did like 10 or 15 years ago. So, and, and just, you know, yesterday, we talked to the folks at the, the COVID Task Force at the county. And there was a mixed reaction. The Director of Public Safety did think it was a good idea, Mr. Hutchins, to do the campaign. There were other folks who, who weren't sure. I think one of the concerns was, well, what if we do this campaign and there's no vaccine available? The vaccine is coming. And so what we have to do is view the education campaign as setting the table so that when people get the, when the vaccine is here in large numbers, we get that 80% because that 80% will help us, protect us from the variants of this, of this COVID that's going to happen. And we know, one of the people at the, at the meeting yesterday, I think the HR director pointed out that one day in the ICU is so expensive when we self-fund our employees here at the county, right? 550 employees, one day in the ICU is like $85,000. So even if we allocate this 50,000 and we keep, you know, three or four people out of the ICU, the, the overall community will save, whether it's our healthcare plan or whether it's some other employer. So hopefully, we'll continue to look at that and, and, and people can let us know their thoughts on it. This is the federal COVID money that was put aside by the federal government to deal with the pandemic. There are certain institutions that have gotten COVID money that cannot use it for this type of campaign. I also read something interesting in one of the national papers about that there won't be a, a massive national campaign on getting vaccines because the, the communities are so different. So part of what we would do with this campaign is target the people that we think are not likely. And I echo my colleague's comment that I really encourage people, if they have an opportunity, to get the vaccine, even if they're young and strong and healthy. Them getting it will prevent them from passing on as asymptomatic carriers, some variant of COVID-19 to their older people. And, you know, we've, you, most of us now, if you ask them, do you know anyone who's had COVID-19? They'll say, yeah. Do you know anyone who's died from it? Sadly, yes. So. So I would encourage folks to get the vaccine and to try to educate people who are, uh, who are reluctant to get it about the positive effects, I mean, about the positive results.
And now I just, you know, I encourage it as well. I received mine. But to spend $50,000 in an advertising campaign right now, I believe is premature. I believe that, I, I called up several northern counties, uh, where they're experiencing, uh, the concerns that this organization is having. People not willing to get vaccinated. Okay? Um, there has not been a, a, a mass vaccination, uh, location yet, but I believe it's going to be in State College. I sat in on that meeting. Uh, and until, uh, we can gather enough data to support this, it's, it's, it's hard for me to vote yes. Uh, and I, and I say that with all due respect to this group because they're, they're, they're individuals that do know. They have the knowledge. Uh, but how do you, uh, target a population that you're not sure who's receiving it or who's not? Or we, we don't even know if we're going to have the vaccines. But, uh, I think the most important, uh, part of the conversation has to be who are you targeting, targeting? And until we see who's getting them and who's not, uh, I, I believe that would be wasted money.
My biggest concern is, is trying to encourage someone to take part in something and then not having to supply there for them, which adds to the frustration level. Because right now, the calls I receive are from people that I can't get the vaccine. Where can I get the vaccine at? And how comes this person gets it? And it's like hitting the lottery. It's like getting a scratch off. Either you're lucky or you're not. You might be on a phone call for five minutes, or you might sit there for two hours, or the phone might ring from one of the providers saying, hey, we have shots available, but you need to be here in a short period of time. So, um, the providers are doing the best they can with the limited number of vaccines they, they have. You know, I, I stated also that, you know, Pennsylvania has 20, 2,600 and some providers, but they've only been able to get vaccines at 880 of them. That's one out of every three providers in the state that's received vaccines. So that means that you're, you're a federally approved, state-approved provider, and you've yet to get vaccines at two-thirds of these centers. Now how frustrating is that? Because you want to help people, you want to be a site that can do so, and yet there's no vaccines to, to give to them. So, uh, by giving the community that message, you know, we'd like to, we'd like to have you give vaccine. It's not mandatory, but we'd like you to. But hey, we don't know where to tell you to go is, is more frustration in the long run for our residents. So again, I think that the message we needed to do to the DOH is, listen, we, we like to have a vaccine center in our county. Please help us to set it up.
You know, just one of the things that the three of us all do is when we run for office, we spend money on campaigns educating people about us. And we try to target who we, uh, direct, but we, we use, we use resources to try to educate people about what our positions are and who we are and why they should vote for it. And I think if you think in those, in that vein, in that, along that line, I mean, that's what we're trying to do with the vaccine education campaign.
Okay, public comment this time? Yes, Mr. Miller.
Thanks for being patient.
Come up here?
Yeah, please step up the podium and, and just state your name for the record.
Okay.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Scott Miller, 822 Tucker Street.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I know Rick and Tony know why I actually came here, but because of all the comments and stuff going on, I want to say a couple other things on stuff brought up.
Yeah, feel free to.
I'm waiting till June to get my vaccine and only if I can get the one I want to choose. I want the Johnson &amp; Johnson. I don't want the Moderna arm. I don't want the AstraZeneca blood clots. Sorry, you know, I'm not going to let you shove whatever you want down my throat. Uh, Tony brought up about the call your representatives. I have zero faith that the federal government will give what I have to say. I know how Tony's going to vote. I know how, uh, Casey's going to vote. I'm not wasting my breath calling them, much less the time. You know, it's just a waste of time. I have absolutely no faith that the American government at the federal level represents me and the constitutional values that were instilled to me as I can read in the Constitution and in the Federalist Papers and everything. I think, I think it's essentially being put through the shredder.
Uh, don't give up.
I, I'm just disgusted with the federal government. I'm absolutely disgusted with the federal government. You know, y'all, you brought up about, uh, people, you know, you can't make them, you know, get the vaccines and stuff. Instead of calling it a stimulus check, call it a wear-your-damn-mask check. And if you don't want to wear a mask, you don't get the money. Easy enough. Easy enough. Excuse me, why?
I was wondering what was ringing. Okay, thank you.
It's my sister. I got to take her to a doctor's appointment. Uh, real quick too, y'all need to shorten your meetings because I'm sure I got a parking ticket by now because it's only allowed two hours at the meter, meters.
Well, we apologize. We had, we didn't have a meeting last week.
I, I understand.
We had a double agenda.
Oh, I understand, I understand. But, uh, yeah, those are the things I think about. Also in, in looking at the, the meeting, you know, looking at the salaries. When we go to $15 an hour, when we go to $15 an hour, a while back in the newspaper, I saw Montgomery was looking for a part-time police officer, 18 bucks an hour. I can flip burgers for $15 an hour or be shot at for 18? I'm sorry. You know? Why would somebody work for Lycoming County when nobody can get 90% of the wages for what you're going to be paying somebody in the Department of Corrections? I'm sorry, uh, the economics just breaks down. You know, the economics just breaks down. Maybe if in your Philly or New York or DC or something, it makes sense. But, uh, mm, I moved here because I couldn't afford $400,000 for a gutted crackhead house. Now, the reason I came here, I know last week y'all probably got this. It's about a company over in England that has what I believe to be a proprietary, uh, way of recycling plastics. And with all the New Green Deal money that they're talking about just washing all over the place and making my kid go into even more debt for the rest of her life, I think we need to hit the federal government up real quick and go, if y'all read it, we need to hit the federal government up. Uncle Joe, give us $41 million so we can build a plant. We got water, we got gas, we got electric. We got plastic trash that Jason Yorke is always trying to find somebody to pawn it off on or else it goes back in the landfill. And we got a company over in Muncie, I believe it is, that makes underground plastic pipes with recycled plastic. I'd rather give them our plastic than to pay to put it in the landfill. And if we can get some of this federal money, I don't know, $3 trillion of infrastructure money, uh, that's 10% of what we owe already. And I disagreed with it when Reagan was in there. I didn't think we should have a trillion-dollar debt, much less a whatever. And, uh, I'm hoping y'all can try to have the different people here in the county try to get in the forefront ahead of the game about trying to bring one of these companies here. One of the things I think about is, uh, even if it were built somewhere else, I'd rather it built here because then it could create some jobs here. And because a lot of our county residents don't get $15 an hour, you know, maybe it would be a nice economic boost for some of the individual people and families here. And that's why I came. I hope, uh, uh, you can put it in the record. I hadn't made a copy of it last week, but just so it's known in there that somebody spoke about it. And I got to go. I got to get my sister to a doctor.
Thank you for being here. Thanks for your patience.
Scott, with your paper that you gave us, there, we have in the past tried to talk to some companies about that. But also, when I mentioned that there were 135 million among all the counties, one of the things I'm hoping we can do is get together with other counties because maybe we can't, uh, you know, we obviously can't put up all the money. They have to go to a private bank. But maybe we can work with other counties to try to bring some, you know, regional.
Well, I mean, this article was saying a private company is doing that investment.
Yes, right.
I think they have space over in that new Muncie industrial park.
Right.
You know, that they would, you know, and can we incentivize to have a company? You know, I'd rather not have to give them penny ones. But if it came down to it, uh, I'd rather use a little bit of my tax money to get a company here so we're not filling Lycoming County up chest-deep in plastic. You know, I mean, a decade ago, I said to the county commissioners at the time, you know, if you want to turn the county into a landfill, New York City will have us neck-deep within the day. You know? And, uh, I was arguing for single-stream recycling then. Well, we got the single-stream recycling after we broke down the map of what was it going to cost to expand the landfill by its obsolescence date. And they said, oh, wait a minute, this is worth it. And so we got it, you know? And I'm trying to think of ways to keep from making places like Lycoming County, you know, we could fill it up ridge to ridge with garbage. You know, I'm sure somebody will give us the lowest dollar amount to fill it up.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you, Scott. We have any comments on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, this is Richard and Allison Rupert from Penn Township. Please allocate $50,000 in federal COVID funds for public health information regarding the importance of getting a vaccine against the coronavirus.
Okay, thank you.
Jody Bayney. Uh, we also need to think about people who are unable to leave their homes as well. I myself, as a nurse, am willing to assist people in Lycoming County to get the vaccine.
Yeah.
She says there are an estimated 2 million people in the United States who are unable to leave their homes and don't have access to the vaccine. She said, let, let's use the money towards getting full access to the vaccine.
Yeah, that's, that's an important one.
To get the vaccine out to the individuals who are unable to leave their homes.
Yep, the shut-ins, I agree, the shut-ins, uh, to locate those individuals and, and have individuals go to their houses to give them the vaccine is something that's not just here, but nationally, as Jody points out.
And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so at this time, the meeting will be adjourned. Our next meeting will be April 6th, Tuesday. I want to wish everyone a blessed Passover season and a happy Easter. Thank you.
Are you guys going up? Because we have those couples that need signed.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll sign them right now.
Mark, thank you so much.
Hey, you bet. Hey, I just wanted to touch base. You, you sent that email out about putting a few items on it. I never knew there was a commissioner's agenda email. So nobody ever, I mean, that's, that's my problem.
Growing a beard.
You know, we're on the fringe and so I don't know, we don't know what the processes are for any of that stuff. So, uh, and we need three copies of, uh, our contracts because you guys keep one.
We always give them to us.
Oh, okay. And then one goes to the. So my absence here after I have a doctor tomorrow.
Yeah, it's the extra money we try to get to pay these extra expenses.